Bring this meeting to order. Everyone please rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, could we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Sermonero?
Here.
Mrs. Fessett here. Mrs. Hartzell, here. Mr. McCullough?
Cheers.
Mr. Potts?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Shaheen?
Here.
Ms. Todaskey, here. And Mr. Basil?
Here. Under announcements, this board had an executive session a few minutes before this meeting to discuss personnel. Also, this meeting is being recorded. The board will also be having an executive session after this meeting to discuss some personnel. Let's see, other announcements. Echoing Governor Corbett's in his speech last Tuesday, the board now asks all employees of the district to voluntarily freeze all salaries and benefits for the 2011-12 fiscal year. Our meet and discuss committee will be meeting with each group to discuss how such a request would be implemented. Having said that, is there any public comment? Seeing none, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Basil. I just wanted to, if you were, had a chance over the last four days to be in this auditorium, there were four sold-out shows for the Wizard of Oz performance. I had a chance to come over and see it yesterday, and I was thinking about sitting up here and watching the Wicked Witch of the West come down here from the ceiling, so hopefully that doesn't happen here tonight. But, Mr. Henkel, if you want to congratulate the cast and the crew on a job well done, it was really a great show to see, and it was nice to see our kids hard at work. Moving on on the agenda, we did have, as you know, we're in the process of our mid-strategic plan review. Each board member, you do have at your place a copy of this mid-strategic plan review that has been prepared for you by Mrs. Trainer, and that represents the work of the Strategic Planning Committee over the last few months. I'm going to turn over the floor to Mrs. Trainer to give you further background on the process from this point forward.
Thank you, Dr. Abo. Just as a little reminder, those of you who've been on the board for a while will remember this, the Department of Education requires every school district, every six years, to convene a committee of a cross-section of staff, both professional, classified administrative, community members, students, and higher education representatives, to formulate a strategic plan. And the second component of that is that, three years into every plan, you then have to bring as many of the group as originally meant back to evaluate progress and also to make any recommendations, commendations on the progress that has made to that point, or suggestions for the committee when they convene within the next three years. So if you look on page one of the blue-colored review report, there are eighteen of the twenty-five names there who are in fact the original committee that met three years ago to draft what is currently our senior strategic plan. And the two students that are on that page are seniors who were selected because they were actively involved in a number of activities that could represent the student population. The mid-strategic plan process requires a school district to look at three components of the bigger plan. One is educational technology, the second one is special education, and the third one is the academic program and assessments. And so, the document in front of you is the summary of the committee that looked at the assessments and academic program. If you look throughout the plan, they addressed a number of issues, and the first area that they addressed is basically just asking the questions, the mission statement, the priority beliefs, and the vision that we had three years ago. In fact, did we follow it? Is it still good for students? Does it represent what we believe is important in our school district? And you can see that the comments were very positive, that yes, in fact, it does reflect who the name of the school district is. The second one, which we ask in all the mid-year strategic reviews, is the graduation requirements, and whether or not they believe that in this particular timeframe, they are adequate. And so, the question was, it's 24.65 credits, something that that committee would support. And as you can see, one of the suggestions was for us, in the future, to consider actually adding another science credit and raising it to 26 credits. And so, throughout this document, you'll see suggestions, and those are intended for the next focus group, which will meet in two and a half years, to reconsider. If you go over to page two, at the bottom, Mr. Shaheen, after the November Curriculum Board Subcommittee, asked me to break to the forefront, another suggestion to be responded to by the committee, and that was something that we've been following, the possibility of adding over time, the waiver policy for physical education for juniors and seniors. And they were very supportive, and actually have recommended that when we do reconvene, that's something that we should strongly consider to be included in the next strategic plan. And then, just starting on page three, the last part of what the mid-strategic plan committee is asked to do is just to do commendations and recommendations. And so, if you read you, you can take a look at that. The document in front of you is just for your information. It goes nowhere. There's a signature sheet that just says, in fact, you completed the process, and you accept. They don't ask you whether or not you agree or disagree. You accept the document at the April board meeting. The only two documents that get submitted to the department event is the second one on your pile tonight, which is Mr. Jacobs's educational technology update, and one that I will have for you before April is Mrs. McCausley's special education update. So, those three different tasks are just typical activities that occur. Mike and Shelley have to actually go into the plan and update the information forecasted forward for the next three years. So, I will stop and ask whether or not the board has any questions on this document. Nothing happens on this till the April 25th board agenda, where you will formally accept it, if you so choose to. And that gives time for the public, if they want to come to the district office and take a look at this, for you to ask other questions of me. It's just a matter of formality that the department has part of the process. So, are there any questions of this document at this point? If not, I'll turn it over to Mike to give you a little thumbnail of what he has done in this section.
I just had a question. I mean, obviously, I was on the committee, but we had another board meeting that night, and I had to step out as we were halfway through the process. And I guess one of the questions I have, I've read this, it doesn't, I mean, this, you know, in and of itself, the document has some great comments and recommendations to it. On the other hand, I'm sitting here as a board member, and we've gone through one year of cuts, we're going through a second year of cuts, and Lorley knows what the future brings for us, and this doesn't seem to reflect the reality that we've been facing in the last 24 months and what we may reflect going forward. So, I'm just kind of curious, you know, what your thoughts are, and, you know, how much of part of that discussion was made before these recommendations came to the board?
You'll see more of that, for example, in Mike's section, where he has revamped his financial projections and technology due to what you're talking about. This is just mostly program and the fact that this is the academic program. This isn't the financial piece of the district.
I get that, but the academic program leads to more costs for the district.
There's actually several things in here that we removed last year and that we're proposing to move this year. They're recommending to reinstate them.
That's my point.
Right.
But these are just committee thoughts.
I know, but you're going to be sending a document to the state that contradicts what we've already sent to the state.
No, no, you don't send anything other than you accept. A sheet of paper that just has a signature on it of Mr. Basil.
We're going to accept a strategic plan that basically contradicts what we as a board are recommending that we move forward with the program in the district. I mean, it, there...
It's your choice to tell me to reconvene the committee again.
I'm just, my personal thought is, you know, under normal circumstances, I mean, this, you know, it's good feedback, and as a board, we could look at and say, well, okay, we hadn't thought about that, and as administrative team, you could say, well, that's not a bad idea, how do we implement X, Y, and Z? But just given the fiscal realities that we've been facing last year and this year, and probably again next year, and I don't know for how long, how realistic is any of this? And if it's not realistic, then, you know, what are we doing with the document? Should we reconvene? Should we take a second look at it, given the constraints that we're currently under, and what we've already, decisions we've already made as a board?
And other than reporting out, I don't have the sole power to make any changes to this, so if you would like to, you're on the committee, would you like to reconvene the committee?
I'm just throwing it out there as an idea. I mean, I'd like to hear some other board, I mean, a lot of people are just looking at this for the first time, so maybe...
It's your choice. I can schedule something in April or May, and this can get most of all this. At your call.
I don't know, we can talk about it a little bit more at the next meeting, or, you know, as people get a chance to go through the list and look through it.
Sure.
It's not a filed document right now.
Yeah. That's acceptable by everybody.
And there's, it says on, no. And there do appear to be a couple typos in it as well, which hopefully we clean down before the final document.
Okay, well, I guess we can listen, we can listen to what Mike has to say, and...
Sure.
Is this please, Dr. Abo?
Yes.
Hello. Okay, the strategic plan, technology portion, as Anne Reid mentioned, is basically to follow. We first take a look at the existing plan, which runs three years instead of five. Look at what's been done, how successful we were, if there need to be improved, if there can be changed. And then, we formulate a second plan that will run for another three years. This plan, current plan, is going to run through the 2011-12 school year, so we've stuck on a year line, and the new plan will run from 2012-13 through 2014-15. In the original plan, we basically broke down the technology needs in the five different components. The first thing was needs assessment. We went to needs, what was our activities budget, monitoring, and evaluation. In the needs assessment, we utilized a wide variety of sources to gain information. We look at best practices, educational research, I read Hoover's trade magazines, and a number of this league, which is an international society for education, our technology and education. Of course, go to all administrative meetings, we've got authority meetings, committee meetings. I'm a member of the Mark County Technology Administrative Group, which not only meets at the UCIU throughout the year, but also listens to schools and sees what they're doing with technology. So, we gain information from a wide variety of sources, including staff, administrators, students, community. Once we went through all that data, this is an ongoing process, it's not like an ending process, because technology is very dynamic. We come up with goals that we felt that we need to accomplish. In doing this, we try to keep the goals fairly general, not get too specific, because, yeah, technology's constantly changing, of course, our fiscal realities are constantly changing as well. Our goals that we identified were to try to keep the infrastructure hardware up to date, utilizing a man who's approved by school four years ago, five year plan. We're trying to maximize the use of the databases and decision-making process. We continue to seek out funds to re-rate another grant, continue to evaluate new and emerging technologies, how we improve student learn and production productivity by staff and administrators, and continue to encourage the staff to improve their training, take additional courses, integrate technology into classroom. After we've identified the needs that we feel we could have, and we start applying monetary values to it. In the previous or the current technology plan, we had estimated that it would cost $647,000 each year to do all of these things. After we put the goals out and the budget for them, then we began to monitor and evaluate if we're being successful or not. When we came to the midterm evaluation process, we found two things that we feel need to be changed, and they were changed in this report. Number one, fiscal realities, we can no longer upgrade our hardware infrastructure on a five-year plan. In fact, we've had, over the years, we've grown to almost seven years, and I think that's going to continue to expand. So, one of the changes would be to change our five-year plan to be as fiscally possible. Try to upgrade our infrastructure and keep up with the money to the best of our fiscal abilities. The budget was adjusted, first year, we were actually 1% lower than what we had expected. The second year, we were 9.8% lower, and this year, if the budget passes in its current state for technology, we'll be 38% below $647,000 that we had expected to get next year. So, our midterm review reflects the fiscal realities of it right now. What I moved forward with the next three-year plan did change a lot. I think we keep things general. We don't get very specific. We don't say we need this survey here, or this application there. We say we're going to, again, attempt to keep our technologies up to date, so we can plug things into them and use new and emerging technologies as they surface. What I did do with the five-year budget was to decrease this one average $570,000 for each of the three years. Again, there's no way to predict, I think, the next three years, where we will be. I know that I've talked to you extensively about the need to upgrade our infrastructure, to move away from no valves and windows, virtualize our servers, virtualize our hardware and our desktops, and to put a SAN and disaster recovery system in place. In the next three years, technology plan reflects our attempt to do that. Again, not specific. Trying to, I did cut back about, I think it's about 12% reduction from what we had predicted three years ago. That's what we're going to have. So, no further questions, everything you'd like to talk about.
Any questions from board members? I don't have any questions either. So, thank you, Mike, you're out of here. Okay, anything else from your report, Dr. Abo?
No.
Okay, any comments from the public? Seeing none, curriculum and instruction.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Basil. I'm going to turn over the microphone to Mr. Shaheen for an update on the curriculum and instruction committee. The committee met on the 3rd of March. We discussed a number of things, particularly the instructional aids and, and we were looking at the number of aids. In fact, Mrs. Trainer came back with a recommendation to partially reinstate in the budget a number of aids to handle either K through three, K through two, K through five, or all the way through K through 12, so we could look at the different scenarios and be able to bring the recommendation back to the board. We'll discuss that at our next meeting. She supplied us also as far as remedial reading and support for the reading and the math, remedial programs, recommendation from that standpoint. And we looked at and asked Dr. Abo to research, and hopefully he'll come back with something at the next meeting, as far as what the benefits of going from a nine-period day to an eight-period day. And I know there's some terminology difference, but basically, we have a nine-period day, now eight class periods and lunch, we're looking at seven class periods and lunch. What does that do for us as far as adding an extra few minutes for structural time and some of those other things? A number of schools are looking at that, I believe. Some are looking at block scheduling, which we decided not to even venture talking about, but definitely look at adding, if we add an extra eight minutes or 10 minutes to a period, what does that do for us as far as education?
Okay. Any other questions from board members on that? What's going on in the curriculum and instruction? Okay, any comments from the public? Quiet group tonight. Okay, buildings and grounds.
Yes, I'll start out here, and then Mr. Potts will have some things to add. The stadium access security issue is referring to a plan discussed at Facilities Committee, which we had also discussed at the board level last, late last summer and early fall, to install a turnstile gate and a card swipe system along with it to allow public access. We had discussed that at some length prior, and it stalled a little bit. We're ready to bring that back. The estimated cost for the turnstile is about $5,000 and $5,200 then for the card swipe system, so if we would have consensus from the board, we would recommend taking that from capital reserves to make that happen. Mr. Potts, do you have anything from the meeting?
Well, not on the turnstile, as far as the high school. Mr. Smith has worked very diligently on his curtailment of energy costs for the heating system, and doing that, we were having an issue with the high school kitchen for the hot water system, or the wash of the machine, and...
Can you get closer to the mic?
Yeah. I'm sorry about that. So, what Mr. Smith is suggesting is adding a hot water heater for that system, which was a cost around $6,800. Of course, right now, the bringing, recovering of the system is too slow, so we need to bring it to this pension, and that would come out of category fund.
I think the issue there with the, with the hot water heater is because the loop temperature is too low. They're not getting the hot water they need, and so, these guys are filling up buckets of hot water and taking across and pouring them in, so I think there's a safety issue there too as well. And by just adding a hot water heater, this all goes away. So, I think that was part of the discussion. And in terms of the stadium access and the turnstiles, this was something we talked about a long time ago last May, and Dave Lorne had gone out and done some bids, and, you know, the bids he got were $23,000 to put the system in place, and the board put the kibosh on it last summer. It came back up in facilities multiple times. We talked about it, about implementing it, but when we were looking, we just couldn't remember whether the board had actually given official sanction to going out and putting the turnstiles in or not. We just couldn't remember whether that was the case or not. We know we have discussed it.
I do have printout from June 14th. Board did it give approval, proceed?
We didn't have a dollar figure.
We didn't have a dollar figure for that, though.
So, if we're ready to move, we can bring this forward as a voting item in the, at the end of the month.
Right.
So, we can get started on it.
Can you just repeat the figure again? Sorry, it's $5,000?
Sure. $5,000, there's two parts to the turnstile, and then the actual card swipe system that will allow us to have people have access electronically, basically.
Okay. And with that, would you also be bringing the forms that Mr. McGath had put together, that anybody wanting to use the turnstile, they would have to sign off on the waiver and the permission?
Absolutely. We would develop a process whereby whoever, because we wouldn't really have a way to monitor who they...
I think if we were working on a policy with...
Yeah.
Catching dock rates.
Right, right. So, in essence, I think, just to get, I don't know if tomorrow you were up to speed with this, so one of the things that we had done last year is, how do we get public access to the tracks, if they can use it, I mean, as public funds, and folks want to get on the track and walk? At the same time, how do we protect the track from being damaged from strollers, or bikes, or skateboards, or who knows what else that may be on the, on the track or on the field? So, the idea was to implement a turnstile, and then the question was, okay, do you have somebody come out and unlock the turnstile for a certain period of time, and monitor who's coming in and out, and what they're bringing with them? Or do we implement some sort of security swipe card system, similar to what we have for the rest of the district, where folks can go and get a card, and they swipe themselves in, swipe themselves out, and we monitor, we can see then who's going in at what time, we can activate the turnstile remotely through computers, when it would accept these swipe cards and when it wouldn't, and then you know who's there at any given time during the, when it's being used. And alongside that, Tom McGath and Ken Smith put together a policy of, you know, what you can and can't do on the track, and what the rules and regs may be for using it. And they had submitted that to the Facilities Committee. I think we just recirculated that after the last meeting, and so, that will have to come forward with...
But then, are there two, are there two separate costs? Like, we know, we don't know...
Yeah, there's a cost for the turnstile, which is about five grand, and then to add the security swipe system to it is about another $5,000.
So, you're looking about 10 to 11 overall.
Not, I see 11. You know, and actually, one other issue sort of came up in regards to facilities, and this is a conversation the board had a couple of years ago. We sort of had a policy, like this $2,500 limit, you know, where anything over $2,500 would have to get approved by the board before it could be implemented. And I just wanted to bring that up again for board discussion, because it seems that, you know, we only approve things every month or so, and so, if there's something that comes up that the facilities, they need to buy, because there's an issue there, and it has to wait until it gets board approval, there may be an issue with that in terms of, you know, it's just problematic in terms of someone's safety may be at risk, or, you know, something may need to be implemented faster, and we're not meeting all the time, so these meetings only happen, you know, every two weeks, and we're only voting on these things once a month. So, I'm just wondering whether we ought to revisit. It was never set in stone, it was kind of like a gentleman's agreement amongst the board, and the district has been following that policy, but I'm just wondering whether we need to...
It was a $2,500 cap.
$2,500 cap, so I'm just wondering whether we need to revisit that, and maybe raise that number, and just trust in our administrative staff, Mr. Smith, to make the appropriate judgments of whether or not this is something that needs to be before the board, and we need to get it done. We need to vote on it, or it needs to be something that takes place right away, and then he can come and talk to us about it.
What happens if, I don't know, the heat system goes down, and it's $6,000? I mean, I don't know, do you wait then, or do they just fix it?
There have been times, emergency situations, where we have gone ahead, and then I just make sure, I let the board know immediately that we're going to have to do it, so that we're not hamstrung by the fact that we have to wait for a vote.
No, that's...
That's only reserved for emergencies. I don't, there are just some things that come up sometimes that require quick action, maybe not emergency action, but it could be two or three days, but help if we could get it done, and it didn't work. Why doesn't the committee go back to the recommendation?
Okay.
Bush comes a shovel, we could always leave that decision-making policy within the committee itself. I mean, the committee had up to a certain amount, and the committee had to call its four members for approval. I mean, there's nothing wrong with that.
If your four board members agree, you only need one more anyway.
That's fine.
I mean, I think it's a good idea. It just kind of came up at the end of the meeting.
Like anything else, I haven't brought a recommendation of love, I think that the board needs to approve anything under that, and it's going to be within the committee.
Does anybody recall any problematic reason why that policy was put into place when it was?
This goes back to Michael Sher, I mean, there was, they just brought everything into the building and grounds committee, and they decided that, I mean, they were approving $200 things, and it was like, you know, let's just, we set $2,500 bucks, cover most of what Kenny needed. There are pros and cons when you decide, I think. But we were approving everything.
Yeah, let me just distinguish, are we talking about things that are already in the budget, or are we talking about additional things beyond that? Because it would seem like things that are already been budgeted for.
Yeah, we're talking about emergency stuff.
Right, so if it's something that's already covered in the budget, I would see why, no reason why they would have to do it.
And those aren't the kind of things we'd agree, if something was in the budget, we generally wouldn't be bringing it forward. These are emergency kind of things.
Right, and I would hope we have confidence in our superintendent to help make those decisions.
Most of the time, there hasn't been an issue where it hasn't been acted. Well, this hot water heater is a perfect example, $6,800 bucks, but meanwhile, we got people carrying, you know, hot buckets of water and dumping them, you know, just, and they're waiting on us to make a decision on that, so it just seems reasonable to address that. Okay, so I think we got some direction there.
Definitely.
Okay.
Hi, Michael. Can you please, can you please address telephones, if they're...
Right.
Clear that up for the public.
Yeah, you have some line notes on there?
So, did we have a definite price for the hot water heater?
It was $6,800.
$6,800. $6,800.
Okay, so just asking in case we have a voting meeting later in the evening, we might kind of put that on the table.
Why are you agreeing?
Okay, so one issue that came up in December, I think it was, that we voted on as a board, was we replaced in the Berthborough Elementary Center, the PA camera system. And I guess there's some confusion out in the public as to, you know, what this was tied into and why we did this and so on and so forth. We didn't, the board approved this because that system failed. We have a PA system that controls the bells, the phones, the clocks, everything in that building. And we just simply couldn't get any more parts for it. And this was a safety issue as well. I believe this thing dials up, it was connected with a fire panel. And it needed to be replaced. So this board made that decision to replace it. And I think that, that speaks to the health, safety, welfare of the students in that building. It's got nothing to do with personnel and rumors flying around that, you know, people are buying phones for administrators and things of that nature. There's no, there's no truth to any of those stories. And so let's just put a kibosh on that right now. And quite frankly, I'd appreciate it if, if these rumors are out in the public, you guys come to the board meetings and you ask the questions of the board instead of just, you know, perpetuating the rumors, let's just get it out here in the board where we can address it and give you the facts. And I think that hopefully addresses those concerns.
Thank you.
Having said that, are there any public comments on facilities? Okay, great. Finance.
Items A through D are routine. We have a submission, we'll have course and credit approvals, of course. We have the approval of the submission of plan on Part K for project right refinancing. Does this spend anything to add on that one?
No.
Any questions running on? Item C, we have an attachment for your budgetary transfers. Item D is our annual stipends for our local fire companies, ambulances and paramedics. Thanking them for some of the service they help us out with. Last but not least, on the budget update, many of you have been listening and following along very closely. Last Tuesday, we finally received word from the governor and the governor's budget address. If you've been following in the newspaper, there's been a lot of press on this issue. But we did receive notification from PDE as to what we finally could expect at least in state funding for next year. And I'm going to ask Mrs. Penza to provide you with the details of dollar amounts and how these figures actually impact the current status of our budget and our budget deficit and also some information regarding the status of our application for potential Act One exemptions. So Mrs. Penza, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure. Last week, we received the news that the governor is going to be funding our basic education at the '08, '09 funding level. We had in the budget '07, '08 funding level. With that, terms in dollars, is that's an actual increase in revenue to our district of $828,422. Special education, we just received a slight increase of $13,544. One of the areas in the budget that was shocking to a lot of us across the state is the governor's budget no longer provides for reimbursement of charter schools. Normally, we got around a 30% back from them based on what our expenses were for the prior year. That's no longer going to happen and we did have money budgeted for that. We had $176,100 budgeted, which we will not see anymore. The next thing, the accountability block grant, the governor's budget no longer provides for this and we had heard rumors of that, so we did not include that in our budget. That's actually, if we had, that's around $419,000 that the district is losing. The net to the district from all of those aspects is a net increase in revenue from what we originally projected of $665,866. So I'm just going to run you through, as Dr. Otto has talked previously, our little math problem that we have. When we originally presented our revenues and expenditures, our deficit was 6.9 million. With the increase in funding that we're receiving of the $665,000, that takes our deficit down to 6.3 million. And if you also include in there the reduction for the half-day kindergarten that has been approved at this point by the board, our deficit is 5.9 million at this point. Dr. Otto also asked me to just talk a little bit about currently, I submitted for exceptions to the Department of Education in approximately about $1.87 million, which would allow the board, if they're approved, to raise taxes above the Act One index level of approximately 1.87 mils on top of what we can go to, to the index, which is our 1.9%, which is approximately .5 mils for a potential tax increase of 2.4 mils. That's it.
I'd also like to add that we have forwarded the approved curtailments to the state regarding the music program and the language program, but we have not heard anything from the state at this point.
Okay, so just to sum up, we started off with a $6.9 million deficit back in December, January. And then we got some bad news in February regarding the state that they'd shifted some monies around. We went up even higher at about 7.3. And then we got the news from the governor and things went the other way. And so we're starting off really with a deficit of about 6.3 million. And with the board decision to go to half-day kindergarten, that reduces that number to 5.9 million. And with our Act One index and special exceptions, there is ability to raise taxes without voter approval up to 2.4 mils.
Correct.
Okay. Any comments from the board?
A mil is about a million in taxes?
For us it is.
For us. Do we know what our average home appraisal value is? Could we have that for the next meeting?
My recollection, it probably hasn't changed. My recollection is about $150,000 a year is the average in the district. That's my recollection from a couple of years ago, but that's not efficient. Yeah, I was going to wait till the end. Okay. Okay, any public comment? This is on finance.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Bidding Chris Marty, 815 Jackson Street. What does that 2.4 mil increase translate in percentage-wise increase?
Say it's about an eight and a half percent increase in taxes.
Okay, thank you.
Jennifer Van Rokel, North Monocacy Creek Road, Douglasville. All things considered, with the budget that came out from the state, what we received, with all of the cuts that you have proposed, with the 2.4 mil increase in taxes, when you do the entire balance sheet, where does that leave us net-net? Are we still looking for places to cut? Do we get ourselves to zero? Does that 2.4 mils on top of everything we've just discussed get us where we need to be? Or are we still short?
If you start it.
Go ahead.
Well, with the 5.9 million...
And then if you, if, if the board were to hypothetically, please, anyone from the press, this is a hypothetical comment, if the board were to go to 2.4 mils, that would be approximately $2.4 million of revenue.
So that gets us to 3.5.
So it would still leave you a long way off.
So what do we do?
We keep looking at programming.
Well, with all the programming that we've discussed over the last five or six board meetings, and I understand it's a very, very difficult task, I don't question that for a moment. What else do we cut from? Are we missing anything? Or are we getting down to 3.5 million, including band, chorus, pay-to-play? Is that, where are we?
What, I mean, essentially what the administration has just described is we started off at six, now we're starting off at 6.3.
Right, I get that.
Okay. And if you're going to use, you know, hypothetically, if you say, okay, we're going to tax to the limit, you know, that's another $2.4 million, that only gets you down to, you know, 3.5 million. And so that's, that's including kindergarten. This board hasn't made any decisions on any other program and cuts to date. So we have a list of things we're considering. I think we're still turning over rocks to see what else is out there. And then at the end of the day, this board's going to have to make some decisions as to exactly which programs we're going to cut and which ones we're going to keep. And that's going to be something that we do through consensus because some people are going to want to keep some things and others aren't, so...
Okay, so I'm just trying to understand, that 3.5 that we're down to at this point does not include any of the cuts that we've been talking about, really outside kindergarten?
That's correct.
Okay. So there is more money coming off of that 3.5 million potentially if we go and cut programs that we've been discussing?
That's correct.
Okay. And then when you get to a final net-net-net number, what happens with the, where does the money come from that you need to make it up from? Do you take it from your fund, your general fund, or is there another tax increase?
Well, a fund balance, I mean, we have $2.5 million in our fund balance. I mean, that is an option. You can use money from the fund balance. But you also have to keep in mind that we need some working capital to pay our bills and pay our debt service. There's a period of time between the end of the year and the end of August where we don't have any money. Our tax revenues don't come in until the end of August. So we use our general fund balance to pay those bills. We found out last year when we looked into this, that amounted to about $2.1 million. And any fund balance that we use is just a hole that we have to fill in the following budget cycle.
So does that mean that that 2.4 mil increase would be the only increase we would see this year? Will we potentially see another increase?
Are you asking if we're going to put forward a referendum?
Yes.
Okay, I was going to bring up referendum sort of towards the end of this because that was discussed in our finance committee meeting. And so I'll bring that up under new business.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Hi, Craig Brown, Woodland Road, Berthborough.
And Melinda Forens, 106 Victoria Drive, Douglasville.
Okay, we want to talk about half-day kindergarten. Have some questions. The last two weeks...
Can we do this at the end? Just because this is finance and I don't, I'm not sure if this is, you know, if you guys are going to give us an update on kindergarten?
No, 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 we were actually going to talk about finance.
Okay.
I thought you were going to finance.
Okay, I'm sorry. No, go ahead. Go ahead, Mike, let's, let's move forward.
Okay. We spent the last two weeks, we were at, as usual, we're at the kindergarten registration. And we handed out surveys. We had 178 surveys filled out. I want to give a quick update on that. We had 20 parents that did, that did not spell out a survey. The questions were as follows. Number one, will you require before, after school care for your child? And the choices were yes and no. 54% answered yes, 46% no. Number of children entering kindergarten, but we had 194. That number's a little bit off because another parent filled out a survey. Options that you're looking at, before or after school care, 42%. 17% looking at private school. 5% homeschooling. 29% none of the above. And other was seven. The last question was, what was your interest level in financially contributing to help say, afford kindergarten? 69% answered very somewhat interested. 21% neutral. Four somewhat, 2% somewhat uninterested. And five, I'm sorry, 9% said that they were not. One, one thing that I've been wondering is, all along, this, this program's going to work because we are counting 300 students registering. We only have to get 200 students that register by our count. I think that's a pretty good number. So if you do some quick math, if we had 200 students, let's say, which we know we won't, we would need a total of nine teachers or to add two, or a $120,000 supplement of money to keep full day. If we had 250 total, that would be a total of 11 teachers. And we'd have to add four, or 240,000. If we had 275 total, that would be a total of 13. And I'm, I'm going off a max class size of 22, by the way. That would be 360,000. So my point is, how do you know at this point how much keeping the full-day program would have cost next year at this point with 200 students fully registered?
That seems to me like a chicken and egg type question. I mean, did only 200 students register because we went to half-day? Or had we been at full-day?
That's a good question.
Yeah, if we remained a full-day, would it be more than 300? There's no way to, to know that for sure. So I'm not sure how I can answer your question.
Well, how do you base it off now? Is it off the census?
Yeah, I believe the answer is that.
Is there any capacity or demand planning going on to look at the actual numbers that you might, that you might have this coming year?
Those are historical numbers that we use. Mrs. Trader, maybe you can add some, some commentary here in terms of how we derive a registration number.
I can give you some statistics, both from what I've done over the last nine years plus what we have as of this afternoon. At APC, currently registered, we have 118 families with 21 families that we know of still to come in to register, which would bring you up to 139 students. And currently, we have 150. So that's only 11 difference. We're only in March. If all of those 21 students come historically, we will exceed the 150 she has just by what I always see coming in the summer to open. I can't guarantee that, but it's just been, we don't see necessarily everyone prioritizing the need to register in the spring. And so we typically will see a number of individuals come in. But we're only talking of a differential right now of 11 students at APC. If the 21 arrived, then we're still waiting for packets to. At Berthborough, there's currently 51 registered. There's 65 in the current class. So without any additional registrations, we're not finished even the registration process in March through the summer. That's only 14 student difference at this particular time. And at Monocacy, we have 47 currently registered, 35 parents still to commit to registration that we identified. And if all of those students, all those parents came and registered, we would actually be 12 students above what we have at Monocacy right now. So now it'll come up to 82 students and we have 75 right now. I would be concerned next year that we use the number 22 students when you're having no instructional agents at this particular point in the conversation. 22 students in a program with no adult support is a difficult group to manage and doesn't allow for any differentiated obstruction. But with that editorial aside, if you use, like the best-case scenario, using those numbers that the buildings provided me with this afternoon, if you use somewhere in the realm of 20 to 22 students, and what we hope we see in the next three months, you're probably looking at anywhere from 11 to 13 minimum staff members you would need to do. That would be my projection. Because we, I can't tell when you're going to have, if we go to half-day, what that would look like. Because I'm going back over five years of full-day enrollment. Wearing a full-day hat and having that conversation with you, I wouldn't be surprised we'd see another 30 or 40 students easy in the district coming in. We see students as late as the end of August coming, where parents just find that that's the time they want to register.
So what you're saying is if we were at full-day, we'd probably see an increase in enrollment of at least another 10%?
I'd probably, I would predict based on what they have right now, if you ask me at the end of, middle of April, once we get a sense of whether the rest of these folks will show up, I could tell you, right now, it looks like it could be close to the level enrollment. It's too early really to give you a true picture of what that's going to look like. I'm just going by numbers and current.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, this is, this is just one of the unknowns. It's been a challenge, honestly.
I'll bet.
I'm sorry, it's been a few questions, you're saying that there's going to be 10%, more than...
I, I can't tell.
So I'm just not understanding what you're saying. So 10% more than what has registered now? Or 10% more than the 290 that you have in kindergarten right now?
Mr. Basil said 10%.
Essentially, what she's saying is, based on historical data, if we were to remain as a five, or a full-day kindergarten, she would have anticipated enrollment to increase another 30 to 40 students beyond what we currently have.
In kindergarten right now.
In kindergarten right now. So shifting to half-day, it looks like we're going to be with the same enrollment that we had last year with full-day. But it's hard to tell.
It's hard to tell this early. I'm surprised with that high this early, hearing a lot of people going to... I'm surprised we're that high this early, hearing a lot of people going to other places for full-day programs.
Looks like we're going to be close to home.
So I think maybe, in fact, I heard comments that they were appreciative that the board made the decision and they're going to deal with it and register. I've heard others that are waiting until the end of March, so it's just, I think we're early to try and make any really true definitive of these best guesses.
Would you think you would know by, would you know by, because you're talking April, are you talking June, July, August?
Well, I can tell the board that last year, I filled the 14th teacher June 28th. That was when I knew I needed the 14th teacher again at this current school year. Up until that, we were planning, maybe we had large class sizes, and we had a number of late registrations in June that took us into the 14th section. So it could be as early as May or June, and it could be the end of the summer, if you were looking at the start of the day.
Okay.
So it's just a matter of...
So last year, at this time, do you know how many people you had registered for kindergarten?
Okay, if we could, I mean, maybe you can call Mrs. Trainer and have that conversation with her.
This is very important, because we do have people who are going to be losing their jobs. We have kindergarten parents.
I understand that. I guess what I'm trying to do is, if we can get to whatever your specific questions are, we can try to address those in this format. Hold on one second, one second. If we can try to address those things, but if you've got, you know, I don't want to entertain a dialogue between you and Mrs. Trainer, that can happen anytime during the work. You know, we've got more business to attend, and obviously, there's a lot of people in the audience as well, so.
And I agree with you, but I have to say that there are people who are going to lose jobs, and there are people, parents, who might have to quit jobs because of the decisions that you're making. I understand that we have to move on from this subject, I understand that you want to get beyond the subject, but these are the lives of people. So give us a couple of minutes to discuss what we need to say.
I understand, and trust me, we recognize the importance of the decisions that we're making up here. What I want to do is, if you guys come to the table and you have questions for us that we can help you with specifically, then we want to help, we want to facilitate. But I don't want to sit here and go into a dialogue back and forth here and with our administrative team. You can do that anytime during the week.
No, you know what, the thing is, is that we've been emailing you guys, and sometimes we don't get responses.
I respond to every email I receive.
Well, thank you, you have. But I think that Craig has just submitted a question. I emailed this trainer today, I went to her office today, because I didn't get any answers.
Okay, well, I understand, we're running a school district too, okay? So people may not be able to get back to you within a few hours, maybe a day or two.
Okay, so my question is, can you call, can you call the students and ask them, the parents of these students, and ask them, what are you planning on doing with your children?
No, I don't think we can do that as a school district.
You know, when I was at, when I was at the APC, they were calling the parents that day, and asking them to come in for registration. You have that information. You have the ability to call these parents, this is your job.
Your three minutes are up.
Okay, well, Andrew, I have to tell you this. I'd like it to go on your minutes, I'd like you to start taking minutes, I'd like you to put on your minutes that no motion was taken to do your research as to how many children are going to kindergarten. I would like for you to call these parents and find out what they're going to do, if they're going to send their children to private school, if they're going to bring them to the kindergarten.
We are not going to, you know, start surveying parents about what decisions they're going to make. I'm sorry, your three minutes are up, and we have to cut you off. I don't like doing it, but quite frankly, we've got to move on.
And that's a shame, that's very insensitive. And let it be known, the discussion that's made at Department of Education, that you are not doing anything to help the situation.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I mean, you guys are...
Thank you.
Thanks.
Jason Martin, I don't know if it was in that. Let's just look for an explanation as to why you're looking at, for the exemption, for the referendum, as to why, I guess, why are you looking for a district court judge to make the decision about raising taxes instead of voting?
I saw this, and it was posted on Facebook, and it was incorrectly interpreted. What we were asking for, and correct me if I'm wrong, and I can see some head shaking out here, we had to submit our exceptions, which is part of what we were talking about to the district court judge, had nothing to do with the referendum, and it was improperly interpreted, and that it spread in wildfire.
So what will the district judge be ruling on?
Whether we will be allowed to go above the minimum that we're allowed with those exceptions.
You're talking about the raising taxes?
Right, correct.
No, there's two.
Hold on one second.
There are three exceptions that have to be ruled on by the Court of Common Pleas. I think there's nine that go to Pennsylvania Department of Education. The $1.8 million that I was talking about went to the Department of Education. The posting on the internet is, we are allowed to go to the Court of Common Pleas regarding assessment appeals that have reduced our assessments in the district, and you can go back a certain amount of time. And that is the part that we're going to the Court of Common Pleas to see if we can raise taxes based on the assessment reductions that we received. So that's the only portion, and I believe it's maybe $49,000 that the judge will be ruling on. The $1.8 million is in Pennsylvania Department of Education, which is special ed, retirement, actual instructional expense per your average daily membership, and things like that.
One more question, then, the one point, correct me if I'm wrong, you said you're looking at a $1.8 million increase in tax revenue if it is passed, is that correct?
If the exceptions are approved, there's the possibility that the board can increase above the 1.9%, they can go up an additional 1.87 mils, if it's approved by the department.
Which would then be voted on by the voters, is that correct?
No.
No, that's the board's vote.
That would be at the discretion of the board.
But that increase, then, would be roughly $1.8 million, correct?
Total increase, there's two parts to it. The first part is the Act I index, which is 1.9%, which is about a half a mil. And then the second part of it is the special exceptions, which Ms. Pennza is referring to, which is this under 1.8 mils. So a total of 2.4 mils, okay, is what's being discussed, 1.8 of which is what you're talking about with the special exceptions, going to PDE for as well as the local district justice. You follow?
Right, but I guess what I'm looking for then, what you're looking at for an increase in taxes as a revenue is roughly $1.8 million.
No, the total amount could be 2.4 million. But that's a decision the board makes, yeah.
Right, so with that being said, and correct me if I'm wrong, one of the budgets is not the, looking at the increase in teacher salaries, is that roughly around $1.4 million?
I believe our salary portion is about $1 million, but then you have benefits in social security.
Everything in there is roughly around $1.4, I do believe.
It's north of $1 million, yeah.
With that being said, then, you know, I strongly urge the board to follow Governor's recommendation, to do whatever you need to do to get the teachers back in here. As far as pay freeze goes, you know, I love teachers, I love everything that they do, but you know, as far as that goes, you know, you're looking, you're asking the taxpayers to pay, you know, even more and more money just so the teachers get a raise essentially, when, you know, teachers are making more than what I am, but you're asking me to pay more money so that they get a raise.
Yeah, if you, at the beginning of the meeting, I made an announcement where the school board has officially publicly asked that all faculty, all employees, all administrators of the school district voluntarily accept a pay freeze.
I was about to say, you know, I'm with you on that, and I urge you to do whatever you can, bring that back to the table, do whatever it is you can.
Thank you, I don't want to cut you off, but I keep getting three-minute violations here, so I hate, what can I tell you, referee?
Hi, I'm Smith, Caroline Douglasville, just a couple of questions. One, is there any updating on the status of middle school sports?
As far as I know, there's no, we haven't changed anything as far as that's concerned. I know Mr. Lagaffe is working on alternative solutions to that, but as far as I know, that 25% reduction in athletics is still on the table for the board's consideration as part of the budget process.
So that 25% means that the sports was stayed?
No, no, it was a 25% reduction in the overall athletic or extracurricular budget.
Mr. Davis, again, I mean, just to reiterate, nothing's been voted on, nothing has been eliminated, nothing's been cut. The only thing that's been voted on and approved is the half-day kindergarten. There's a pool, there's a number of options we have available, that being one of them, but nothing's been approved, voted on, they're finishing, working at, trying to...
Do we know when we may have some more information?
We've got a budget that's up until the end of May.
I don't think we're going to ultimately make a decision on these types of things until we get to the end of April, May. I mean, we have to provide the public with a budget for your review and comment 30 days before we submit it to the state, so, actually, before we vote on it. So it'll be the end of May before ultimately all the decisions are made. I mean, right now, what we've been doing for the last two and a half months has been, okay, you know, let's turn over all these different rocks and see how much money that we can find, and it's a process. So sports was one of the things we talked about a few weeks ago, and we've talked about ban, we've talked about all kinds of different things as we've gone along this process. We just found out last week what our level funding is probably going to be, and we're still waiting to hear from PDE on the special exceptions. So we're still working on the revenue side of the equation as well. We're also in the middle of negotiations, so who knows what those negotiations will bear up.
Right, okay.
Mr. Basil, that's what the governor's stated, that hasn't been approved, and we still might not have the final number. And even as of the end of May, that would be a preliminary budget, actually, we can make change up until the final vote in June. So even if we followed out a, you know, a balanced budget or whatever in May, we still have roughly 30 days to change something. It's just going to be a moving target, more or less, until the last vote in June.
Mr. Smith, it has been also the state's practice, if you will, when they post the figure the way they did for us last Tuesday. Sometimes it's, I hate to say it this way, it's for convenience, they give us a number, and that is a moving target, and that number often will change in the prevailing 12 weeks from the time we get it to the time we actually have to use it. We've actually had it change as late as even after the budget was passed, they make adjustments in it. So we're doing our best, we're working very hard administratively, but the one person from the public that was up here when we were doing the math problem, we realize administratively that we've got to advise the board on how to get that budget gap closed, so we're working very, very hard behind the scenes with, as I've said all along, many, many distasteful kinds of reductions, but nevertheless, they need to be discussed and ultimately made.
I agree. There was a document, January 18th, that we presented, it was a PowerPoint slide that was presented.
Correct.
Has there been any updates? Can we get a more current version?
No, we didn't update it yet, and that was pending, the governor's information, so there are obviously some things that we can change on a couple slides there, but we haven't done that yet.
Is that something that we can post to the website?
Sure.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm just thinking that for...
No, it's a good suggestion, we just haven't done it yet, there's been a lot going on, and we haven't updated that yet.
Just for the benefit of, you know, obviously, it's not many people here tonight, for the folks that, you know, for whatever reason don't make it to the meetings, you know, maybe a summary of, you know, one pager, just, you know, here's the status of our district, maybe it might be a helpful document, could be posted.
No, I think that's a fair comment.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Shane Cockle, 830, Townborough. With the possible tax increase of 2.4 mils, I think you strongly have to look at the sports budget again. You're cutting 25%, and your sports budget costs approximately 1 mil to run a sports budget. So you're asking the taxpayers to give 2.4 more mils, which will take away from their fun activities like the sports are to this district. The sports program is not tied to the education, it's not mandated by the state, it's a fun activity. So before you ask the taxpayers to pay any more increase, you need to cut the extra out of your budget, and I think the sports budget is one more thing that needs to be cut more than just 25%.
Okay, thanks, Shane. Okay, one more public comment, moving on to personnel.
I would like to draw the board's attention, there's items A, B, C, D, and E. I'd like to draw your attention to C to A and B, that represents the names that we will be bringing forward to unfill the gap pending Mrs. Nyman's retirement. The only information we'll need to fill in there for further discussion will be an effective salary. So that kind of represents our plan to reorganize the central office. Also, item D would be appoint Mrs. Barr as our school board recording secretary, again, replacing the trusted Mrs. Nyman here, and she's counting the days. And item E as well represents the revision of all the job descriptions that would make all of this possible and make it all happen. I'd like to thank Mrs. Trainer, Mrs. Barr, Mrs. Nyman, Mrs. Price, Mrs. Penza, we all kind of put our heads together to try to consolidate these positions, which will actually result. And a little bit of a cost savings to the district, just so you know, central office-wise, we also consolidated to try to save some money in this budget crisis, we'll be operating with one less employee in my area. So I'd like to thank everyone that had some input into this process, and I'm asking the board to support the recommendations that we're bringing forward.
So my first question, I think you just addressed, everybody within the district office was, had input as to whether this will work efficiently?
Correct, yes.
The delegation of duties makes sense, where they've been reassigned.
Absolutely.
Okay, and then also with the job description, under number one, the superintendent, secretary?
Yes.
Number 19 listed under duties, say, assistant supporting activities coordinated by the assistant to the superintendent. I think it should just say to the superintendent for that one, and then number two, it should say the assistant, number 26.
Okay, yeah, if you would just jot those down.
I think it was just a copy and paste.
We can make sure.
We added...
Sure, absolutely. But that change will be happening, as you can see, May 9th, come official, have a new person up here soon, won't be the same. But we won't say anything yet, she's still here. But that concludes my report on the personnel, unless there are any questions.
Seeing none, any comments from the public? All right, programs.
You have your monthly enrollment report. Enrollment, I would say thankfully, is not on its way up. More students without more industry always means more building and less, and less money going around, so we're kind of glad the enrollment's going flat for a while here. The graduation date, as our custom is now that we are having graduation in our new facility, is the last day of school, which, barring any weather, would be Monday, June 13th, if I'm correct, Mr. McQuillwell, right? So we can begin to...
Just to schedule that.
What's the board's, I mean, this is my first time doing a graduation, so what's the practice been?
We just rescheduled the committee of the whole.
Okay. So for the benefit of the public and the press, if you're here and want to print that for us, we will, Monday, June 13th, first graduation on our new field.
I know when we originally talked about graduation at the field, we talked about having a rain date.
Yep.
I thought the discussion was that they'd actually possibly graduate the day before the last day of school, so that if it was raining, they would then graduate on the last day of school, or are you thinking now...
Mr. McQuillwell, you want to weigh in on that for us? Why don't you go on to the mic and join us?
When I talked with Dr. Arrow about that, we just, I had the rain date for the next day, but I'm fine with moving the graduation date to Friday, and then if it rains, the rain date can be Monday, that's fine with me. The Act 80 says it doesn't cost the district any...
It doesn't matter to me, I just think we need to have a rain date, based on bad weather.
Excuse me, I thought we were going to go towards Friday anyway, because people travel and it's...
Yeah, come in and everything else.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought one time we had discussed doing like a Thursday or Friday, so that way, case the family from, you know, relatives from out of town, it's more convenient to stay, rather than doing a Monday, then have to head back or whatever. I mean, I thought that was supposed to be...
I'm aware of that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I think we...
I prefer high school.
So we're...
You know, I made it up.
No, no. I thought we talked about it.
Yeah, I did too. But we're gonna do it on a Fri-, do it Friday with a rain date on Monday?
I think that makes sense.
That's fine.
We just wanna get a date posted. If there's consensus on the board of what I need, just for Mr. McElwalt's direction, so he can let his students know. Do we want a June 10th fight?
Yeah. Friday, June 10th?
Yep.
So, let it be said here tonight that we are announcing graduation as Friday, June 10th. Now, let it not snow again. I guess we just have to kind of lock into that really.
Rain date could be Monday?
Right.
Yes.
Great, thanks.
Okay.
That concludes programs.
Any comments from the public on programs? Okay, seeing none. Policy.
Wait, wait, you have a question.
Sorry.
Is that a question? Is every time that, or all school that?
Yes, that's the last day of school.
Monday's day.
No, they're half days, and there's an end of the year schedule. But the official last day is June 13th. Schedule gets a little different at the high school for exams and things like that.
Okay, moving on to policy.
The only comment I would have is we've added for, based on discussion last month, the change in the volunteer policy that now we were asking to include annual clearances. So, that's just the first reading. If there's anything you notice in there that you want changed or edited, we can certainly do that and have time to do that before the second read.
My only comment, again, I made it at the last meeting, was regards to the extracurricular, co-curricular thing. Just bring it up one more time as a.
Let it go, Andrew.
Huh? Let it go. Just wanted to set it out there, because once we put this in motion, you know, given the financial constraints we have, it, I think it may put programming at risk. But if everyone's okay with it, then we'll go forward.
I agree.
Okay.
Mr. Basil.
Just thought I'd bring it up one more time. It's too late to do it after it's passed. Okay, moving on. Transportation.
That's yours.
Okay, so, Walt, did you wanna take this?
We met, as we promised, we're meeting with all our contracts, people that have contracts. We met with the two busing companies a little over a week, a half, two weeks ago. And they came up with a number of great ideas. They're gonna go back and put some numbers around. So, I don't wanna go out and throw some, you know, what the ideas are. They did come up with some pretty innovative ideas to see what we could do to potentially save some money on our busing contracts. And as, it goes around with the efficiency, increasing efficiencies of some of the runs. And see where they, where it comes about. One thing that was brought up, and I believe Mrs. Trainer has had it in that direction, so we're going to at least talk about it. There was a number floated out there of about $57,000 for busing for kindergarten.
Midday.
Midday kindergarten busing. And if we utilize the same bus to bring kids to school and then take them home, whatever order that is, whether it's take them home and then pick them up, or pick them up, pick them home, that cost would be roughly half. And I think the committee felt that, based on that, that we would bring that as a recommendation back to the board, that we should offer the midday busing because, at that field, at that fee.
We may have to change the valve.
Yeah, we may have to change the valve. But that's something she knows about. She's gonna work, work with that. But that was a good, good thing for us. One thing that they did ask us to bring to the board and discuss real quickly was the fact that when the various activities, whether marching band or sports or whatever, goes out and gets bids for buses that are outside of what they supply normally, neither busing company typically is considered or ever is asked for bids. And the buses, and several of the companies that are selected, although they are low bid, have questionable safety records. And that is a number that is able to be secured from the Department of Transportation. And I'm gonna bring that up again and probably bring a motion in front of the board that we draft a policy that, A, not only do our partners get a chance to bid, but a minimum safety level.
Great.
They do a number from 1 to 100. With our, I think our busing companies have a four in several of, which is excellent. We set a level of, say, a 10 or something. We look at what we consider that, that's a minimum requirement for a request for quotation, that you have a minimum safety requirement, except by the Department of Transportation of a 10. Last thing we need to do is have a repeat of what happened up in New York with a bunch of our students on a bus that transportation, they have a very spotty transportation safety record.
Is this information readily available online?
Department of Transportation online.
Yeah, there's a website that you can go look at, and you can see what each busing company's rated. And I think it goes from 1 to 100. And, you know, our busing contractors are rated.
The lower the number, the better.
So, we're not saying they can't solicit other bids.
Just as long as they're within, whatever.
Whoever they go with, correct, can have a minimum safety record.
And, and.
That's reasonable.
That we, that we require these.
That's actually, we should already have them doing that.
Right. And, but we also would require, again, this is just a requirement, that they at least solicit a bid from our two contractors. It's.
I think that's fair.
Yeah, I mean, you keep the business in the district if you can. I mean, we do, we do go and try to put business back into locally owned, money back in local businesses. To send it out of the district doesn't make a lot of sense.
Well, not only, I mean, these people are contractual partners. They came to us with ideas. They advertise in the school district, you know. So, I think.
And they've given us concessions.
And they've given us concessions. So, to ask whoever's making the decisions about where they're going on a field trip, and what busing company they're using, or on a competition or something, to at least give them the opportunity to bid on it. They don't have to select them, but they have to give them the opportunity to bid on it. I think it's a fair request.
And I do believe we had a follow-up meeting next week.
Right, the 22nd.
22nd on Tuesday, to, to see what some of their ideas came about, and where we can see if there's something.
So, somebody's working on a policy for you, or?
No, we, we're gonna.
We haven't, I mean, they just brought, they brought that idea to us too. They were like, were you guys aware that, you know, some people are getting on a bus, and it's got a rating of 50?
I wonder if PSBA has any samples.
We'll take a look at that.
I know.
I think that's a good idea.
I already made a note of that. Yeah, we got your blog out, or we got superintendents, or whatever you call that.
No, we, we could, I think PSBA must have some kind of policy.
I mean, we're opening ourselves up to potential problems.
It may just be a revision to our own, our current transportation policy by just adding a priority.
Okay. And again, hopefully, we'll have something else to talk about at the voting meeting, when we talk about transportation.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay. Any comments from the public? All right, seeing none. Old business. Any other issues in old business?
None from the administration.
Okay. Just a reminder, hopefully, all the committees are keeping the appropriate minutes.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
What is the process? I mean, I have the minutes from the curriculum committee meeting, which was just where it was held, the members who were attending in the agenda, time it started, time it ended, because that's what we were told we had to keep. What is the process of getting those either approved or into the system?
I think my experience has been that at your next curriculum instruction committee meeting, your, your committee members would read the minutes, approve them. And once they've been approved, you guys just send them to the administration, and they can post them online, should we approve them at this point.
I think they may also then need to be, they need to be sent into the committee in the whole and then voted on.
I think so.
No, no, that's not what he said.
It had to be at the committee.
At the committee level, right.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. On email, was there, we talked about email, tweets, texts, IMs. Were there any other thoughts by board members on that during meetings or anything like that? Any idea how we police that? No comments.
Roll the dice.
Follow the golden rule, hopefully. Okay, any comments from the public on emails? Or, I'm sorry, old business. New business. Any suggestions for new business?
Yes, the meeting discussed committee has met, and we would like to propose that the board offer an early retirement incentive program for teachers with 25 or more years of teacher service in the district. We would like to propose implementing this as soon as possible, so that we can proceed, you know, with the things and decisions that we have to make with respect to the budget for this year. So, we would like to set a timetable for this for teachers that might be interested in this to submit a writing to the superintendent, subletter of interest by March 28th. And with final paperwork to be submitted, for those who are choosing to do this by April 4th. The format of the program, which is what we'd like to offer, is a, and what the committee's recommending, would be a $20,000 early retirement incentive, which funds would be deposited into the 4 through the account for that teacher. Other committee members, did that reflect something? Did I leave anything out?
Yes.
Okay. So, our committee would like to make a recommendation of this to the board. And we would like, I think, to get a motion to that effect.
So. Are we can be the voting meeting?
We didn't.
Is that?
We didn't have one yet.
We didn't have a voting meeting, so.
Or, is that what you're asking, or the committee?
I think, I think timing is of the essence as far as this is concerned, really for both parties, both for teachers that might be potentially interested in this program if the board are trying to work out our budgetary issues. So, I would recommend that we take this up.
Okay, should we suspend this meeting?
Why don't you close it out for a little bit?
Yeah, you only got, you got.
Okay, all right, yeah, just, why don't you just close up this meeting and do a voting.
Do that.
Rather than do that, go back and go back again.
That's fine with me.
We're almost finished, Mr. Basil.
Yep, no, I think it's a great idea. Okay, anything else?
One, one quick note out of revenue enhancement. We were discussing again the adoption program initiative, and a couple of things you'll see on the district website under the school board section. We've cleaned up the à la carte menu that we were working with a little bit. And we would like to kind of proceed to the next step. We have a sample survey out there that we would like to eventually make public on the website that would ask folks what their interest is in such a program, and if they would participate in it, if it were available. And we also like to start engaging the technology department as well, as well as some other folks, to start developing a webpage so that we can better explain what this program is. And we're just looking for the board's consensus on us moving forward and utilizing some of those resources to do that.
I have a question on the form that they would donate. Should there be some type of indication at what percentage would be tax deductible? I know that's pretty common on a lot of donation forms. It's not, is it fully tax deductible, or it's not fully?
It, well, it depends, I guess, if the answer, if you're a business or if you're an individual. And so, we sort of talked about that, and getting that information out there, whether, quite frankly, some, some companies match, employers match, and things like that. So, maybe getting that information on a form or on page somewhere to explain that as well, to help incent people to make a donation. Yeah, that's a good suggestion.
That would be my only suggestion for the donation form.
School districts can accept deductible donations, if that's your question. So, it would seem to me appropriate, you know, if you wanted to put that online to disclose that. So, school districts can't accept tax deductible donations.
The form's stolen its grants, so obviously that could be.
My suggestion.
So, do we have consensus from the board to allow the revenue enhancement committee to move forward with this initiative, and perhaps put up a website and survey the public? And we can certainly make that survey in a demo site, et cetera, to the board first for comments, and then, and then put that out there to the public. That works for everyone?
Great, okay, we'll do that. Just before you recharge, just a real quick comment again on, on our alumni database. We've been work, we've been working on that. Mr. Jacobs has, has been able to get some student volunteers, and he has gotten the alumni names keyed in from 1967 through 1995, plus 1999 through 2010. So, we're in the process of getting the names in from '96 to '98. And this is all for yearbooks. And then we have 1957 to 1966, which there are in the yearbooks. We're, we're working on how to get, how to get those names. That's it.
Okay. I've got a couple of things that came up in the finance committee. One of them was the, the administration was looking for some guidance on moving forward with a copier contract. And the savings to that were approximately $40,000 by using our current copier contractor. And we'd be, I guess we got 16 or 17 machines in the district. They would take those machines off our hands for free and, and replace them with new machines. We've had a good experience with that particular contractor. We bid out two other service providers. One was competitive, but one we had used in the past where the service level, service was a little problematic when there was an issue with one of the machines. And the other one was considerably higher. So, their recommendation would go with the current contractor that we currently have at the lower price. And that was a savings of about $40,000. The other issue that came up was, we have two enumerators in the school district. One's in Amity Township, the other one is in Birdsboro. Our tax collector had made a recommendation that we eliminate the Amity position, because it's almost redundant with what that particular person is doing and what we're doing internally here in the school district. And the third thing was, we discussed the referendum. And the issue that we're wrestling with on the finance committee was, you know, quite frankly, you have to have a balanced budget to even address a referendum issue in bringing it to the public. And without having a balanced budget as of, as of yet, it's a little difficult to quantify exactly what that referendum would be, and what programming would be a part of that referendum. In addition to that, we were already looking at an eight and a half percent tax increase on the public if you use the Act, Act 1 index as well as special exceptions. And we had not yet heard back from all the different employee groups that we were discussing things with. So, it was almost impossible to come forward with a recommendation to the board as to what a referendum amount should be and what that would entail. And unfortunately, that's sort of where we ended up. So, our recommendation was not to move forward with a referendum. Any questions or comments for the board? That's all I had. Any other new business? Yeah, I will take the public comment. Any comments for the public?
Shane Cockle, A3000 Town Road. I just have a quick question on the email that I sent you about, in order to become ineligible for sports, you have to be failing three subjects. Did, did anyone have any comment about that? Are you guys looking into changing that?
That's, you know, I read your email. I'd have to read our, our current policy. And I think that that would be something that the curriculum and instruction committee could take a look at, because that kind of falls under their domain. And they could take a look at that and come back to the rest of the board with a recommendation as to, you know, what we should do in that regard.
We can look at it. I mean, I don't wanna say we've got more pressing things to look at, but as far as staffing and stuff, we can look at it. One of the things I would just ask Dr. Aron or Mrs. Trainer to do is see what the impact of that would be, how many, how many students are failing two sports, or two subjects, and they're still playing. I mean, if it's, you know.
We have to comply, we have to comply with what PIAA says. I think we exceed PIAA regulations. Right, we do. Mr. McElwalt, I mean, you're here.
We do see PIAA.
Yeah, you're here. We can have this really good.
I see that for credits.
Well, I think what we can do is we can have the curriculum instruction committee look at it. And quite frankly, you know, get some more information on there. And maybe they can bring a report back to the board. Between now and May, I would say they've probably got their hands full with just the budgetary curriculum issues that we're throwing at them, which is quite a bit. And maybe it'd be best if they take that up a little.
We can look at it after, because I envision, once we get the, the state's replies to our tailwind stuff, we're gonna have a whole, a whole bunch more stuff with that, so.
Yeah, because, I mean, the, your whole argument with keeping a sports program is to go on to continue an education in college. And if you're failing two, three subjects, you're not, you're not, you're gonna have a very difficult time getting into.
You're not allowed to play if you're failing three subjects. You're not allowed.
I mean, if you're failing two subjects and you're still playing. I mean, if you're failing two subjects and you're still playing, you're, you're going to have a hard time getting into colleges and universities.
Well, we'll have to, we'll have to review the policy. I think you bring up a good point, you know, academics first and...
Okay, thank you.
Jim Ferrans, 106, authority drive. During the portion where you're talking about the revenue, you discussed the possibility of creating some type of survey that would be used to go out to the general public to get an idea of people that would be interested in being involved or something of that nature. The question that I have is in regards to kindergarten. Is there any possibility that we could receive some kind of assistance similar to that from the school district or the board to be able to determine how many more children will be registering so that we can get an idea of the total number? Obviously, the reason why we're asking for this is, you know, the dollar amount that we're trying to raise is quite high, and that's based on a certain amount of children. So, we're really trying to gauge the number of children that will be coming in. So, we're asking, is there a possibility of some help from the school district or the board?
I mean, we can certainly discuss it. I don't know what else to say other than we, we have to talk about it. I mean, as it stands now, you know, we take up these things in, in committee and discuss what that survey is going to say, how do we want it to read, you know, what are we trying to, to get from that survey? And then, you know, we do all that at committee level and then bring it to the board for their sanction to move forward. So, I think the format would be is what committee would discuss, what the survey is going to entail, how many questions is it going to be, whether that's something we're going to entertain.
The question I would have, and again, I understand what you're saying. Time is of the essence for our initiative. Obviously, we're looking at the March 27 deadline. So, if this would be something that you'd be willing to assist us with, how would that impact our deadline?
I don't think it would impact the deadline. I guess the other thing I'm just sort of thinking of as you're speaking, this is just me, Andrew Basil, as a board member. I'm just wondering if the school district is putting out this survey, depending on what it says, does that contradict the decision that we made in terms of moving from full day to half day? And we don't want to send out a mixed signal to the public. And so, that's just sort of what's going through my brain at the moment. So, you know, is there another way that we can, I don't know. I don't know if there's another way we can help you guys.
Do you have, do you have a website established that you can put the survey on your website? I mean, it might not be a contradiction for us to say on our website that there is an organization out there that's, that's trying to reestablish full day kindergarten and click here and it'll go to their website.
But Mr. Semen, even better, yeah. Two representatives from the press out here, they can put it in tomorrow morning's paper or tell them to go to your website. And if you haven't already registered kindergarten, please indicate whether it will be or not. And then you'll have a better idea of whether it's another 25 or 30 year term. Kindergarten.
We certainly do have a website. It's been on, all the information that we've distributed at the registration events and in public. You know, we would appreciate any assistance that we could get, both through the board and the school district. There is a core group of individuals that have taken on this task, and for us, it's almost still a full-time job.
Right.
I think the unfortunate problem is, as Mr. Basil outlined, the process at least, that process would take us well beyond your 27th deadline, which Mrs. Trainor needs to be able to put that other program together.
Is there, is there an issue, I know we probably have to discuss it further, but is there an issue for us just putting on our website that this organization is doing what they're trying to do and here's their link? And just get it to their link? Is there, do we see any contradictions about this?
I think Mr. Basil's comment, though, I think it kind of takes away from the fact of what we...
Well, we should have told them no then when they first started this, if we're not going to give them headcount support.
Can I ask, I have a question, though. I guess what, I mean, are we trying to determine if they're raising enough for the amount of kids that they have enrolled or are they raising X amount? Because I kind of get the feeling that, well, that they're looking at, well, if there's only 200 kids that are enrolled as opposed to the 300, then they only have to come up with 275,000 or something. And my concern is, if, if we say, if that's their goal, and then all of a sudden half day comes or full day comes back, and these 17 other percent plus the 5% that are homeschooling and the 7% that are others said, oh, wait, now it's full day, I'm going to send my kid, and we don't have the money. So, I'm not really sure what, what the reasoning is behind trying to get the information of who's registering and who's not.
Well, conversely, the other flip side of that is if we do raise $425,000 and we don't get any additional children registered, then we raised more money than what is needed.
Right. But I think you'd have to raise it and give it back. I don't think you cannot raise it and then need it. I just, I mean, I'm concerned that, that we're getting into an area where full day kindergarten is going to come back and it's not fully funded.
Correct. I agree with you.
I don't think it's a negotiation.
If I could just add a comment, I think, based on the scenario that took place at the board meeting, I think a motion was read. The motion was very specific. And I, at this point, I would have to support the board in saying, the way the motion was read and explained is the expectation that needs to be met.
That's correct. And I do agree with you, but we're not, we're not getting into their business. Let them do that on their website. You know, what we're doing is just saying that...
If all you're asking is to put a link on our homepage, sending them...
I'm sorry, say again?
If you're only asking, can we put a link on our homepage directing everybody to their homepage, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, it's only going to be, you know, if it's going to help them out, then go ahead and figure out what we're going to do and what it's going to say and link it to you. You know, and add a flying banner going across or whatever, I mean, but...
I'm just trying to think of the format. So, now, if we do that here, we're going to do that with every group that goes out and solicits money or fundraises them to benefit the school district. So, if we're going to sort of...
It's going to weaken your adoptive program if you're, if you're going to open it up to all these other community groups, you're going to be setting a precedent.
Well, that's one of my concerns, and if we're dipping our toe in the water, is there some sort of format we need to think through in terms of...
Well, we didn't commit to other groups, we committed to them.
That's right. We'll talk about it in a short period of time. On the left-hand side of the webpage is a series of quick links. I don't see what harm would be adding a quick link...
Well, the dating board news in the center section, so it floats through every now and then.
You could do that as well, but I don't see what harm this, to assistance group would try to accomplish what they're, which is really for the students after all.
But the board supported their initiative, the board not supporting other initiatives. So, let's support the initiative and put something there. I mean, they're coming down the wire, they got, what, two weeks' money. Let's, let's at least get a headcount. I mean, they may find they can't do it at 300, but at least let them stop running into a wall right now versus, you know, you know, thinking they got 200 students and maybe we can get to 200 and feel that they got there and then all of a sudden another 100 come in and they know they didn't get there.
So, the, the suggestion is to have a link on the website to their website where they can survey how really want to survey? Okay.
That would be appreciated.
And we got, is there, anyone against that idea?
Not committing bringing the number down.
Okay.
They're just trying to get a survey. Just a link, there's no worries. Committing and all for the press.
That's, I mean, if you're taking the position that we supported this initiative, but I, I, I think you are, you're, you're walking a slippery slope. And as long as the, the reasoning behind it is that we supported this initiative and we're not just going to put anybody's third-party link on there? I mean, I have that concern, that you're setting precedent.
We already got 30 part and links on it right now, the Facebook and the LinkedIn, so...
But that goes to the Danaboo.
That's Danaboo, though.
All right.
And also ask to have the press put in their, their authority to go to your site also.
Yeah, so I think you got an idea. No one here objected to the idea of putting a link on the site.
Thank you, that's appreciated.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for asking.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Monica Hamel. By the way, Monroe Street in Birdsboro. I'm kind of thinking here as a taxpayer, and then I'm kind of torn because now I'm a parent of children that go to Danaboo. I really have a problem, I guess, with the taxes going up too much because not only are we proposing increasing taxes a little above what we, what we can just agree to raise, but then we have the adoptive program, we have money that we're going to have to put into that, there's the pay-to-pay, there's so many other programs out there. I mean, today I had something come in for a fundraiser for cross-country, then people wanted to all of a sudden give money for other organizational activities, field trips, shoes, new sweat jackets. I mean, we're really getting bombarded out here with all the different types of things that we need to spend our money on. One of the problems with the taxes is we have very little control over that. The other activities, we kind of have control. If we keep introducing all these new activities, how are you going to monitor these activities? And if you're creating revenue, how are you going to account for all of these activities? It just seems like there's a lot going on where that doesn't seem to be, like, discussed all the way through. And maybe that's just the process. But I, I mean, I just feel like I'm getting overwhelmed with what you guys are all proposing. I don't know if anyone else feels that way, but it just feels like the taxes and everything is just a lot. So, what, what, what do you want to happen? We have the pay-to-play, the taxes, the adoptive program? I mean, it just seems like there's a lot of loose ends.
I, I mean, I'll make a comment. I mean, I think, you know, all, yes, is the answer to all those things. So, yes, we are looking at taxes as a source of revenue because that's really the only lever that this school district has to pull. And, you know, that's, that's part of the equation. Yes, we're looking at, at cost savings and curriculum and cutting operating expenses from that, from that side of the equation. Yes, we're looking for alternative sources of revenue so that, you know, if you're a taxpayer and, you know, you have retirees in the school district and things of that nature that, you know, are living on a fixed income and, you know, maybe, you know, raising taxes on them is a little more difficult than working families. So, you know, maybe the activity fees and things of that nature that go specifically towards parents that have kids in the school district, you know, helps defray some of those additional expenses that we as a district inherit as a part of rolling out those programs. And if you can defer some of those or reduce those expenses, then that allows us to take, maybe take the edge off of some of the tax increases that we have to look at. I don't know, but we're looking for all different sources of revenue that are out there. The activity fee committee is proposing, you know, has kicked around a couple of ideas. Those ideas may generate anywhere between $100 and $175,000 in additional revenue to the school district. You know, we have gate fees that generate $45,000 a year to the school district. You know, those things right there is, you know, over a quarter million dollars, you know, towards offsetting our programming costs around the extracurricular programs that we have in the school district. And at the same time, we're looking at cutting those expenditures as well. So, I think there's $180,000 in the sports budget, middle school sports, whatever that's on the table. So, we're coming at it from both sides. And unfortunately, I think, parents in the school district are going to have to look at paying more fees for, for things that they want their kids to participate in going forward.
But you have the manpower to control all this?
What's that?
Do you have the manpower currently without adding more staff to control all of this activity?
Well, I think so. We currently manage the activities, so it's just a matter of managing the accounts. We'll have to, we'll have to address that component of it. And just in our last revenue enhancement committee meeting, that subject came up and, you know, we brought that to the administration's attention and they're looking into it. They're talking to our auditors in terms of, you know, how do you account for checks and things of that nature? And they're, you know, hopefully they're going to come back to us with a recommendation that we can discuss at the revenue enhancement committee, and if there's a workaround, then we'll have to work around it.
If I could just make a comment, I think, for the general public as well, we announced that we received certain revenue from the state, and it looked like a good, you know, a good thing because we said, well, there's X more. That was more than the money that we actually put in the budget. If you measure it to last year's money went down exactly what was expended?
It's over 8%.
We're actually close to 10% of a cut from last year's state funding, from what we got last year. That's why we didn't smile when we say, well, on paper it looks like more, but it's 10% cut from the state from last year. It's almost a million dollars that we received in less state funding. And I think it's just important to impress upon everyone the struggle that we have with dealing with the money. We're not making any of this up. When the government, the state government cuts our funds, we have very, very little control over that. If you follow what goes on in the newspapers and you need to get political with what, what this means to you, we suggested letter writing. We suggested reaching out to the legislators. We got cut 10%. I, I don't know how else to say that. We don't like it, we really don't have a whole lot of control over it. But at the end of the day, it's the local community that's left with the struggle, not the people in Harrisburg. So, you need to understand that, and your voices need to get to the people in Harrisburg. I say, in every meeting, and I'm going to say it again, we did not ask to be cut 10%, but we were. So, I, and I don't, I'm sorry to bring that comment out here, but it's, it's, it's just making me think about all the struggles that we're going through. We're not manufacturing any of this. It's bad. 10% is a lot of money.
That answer your question?
Yes, it was more of a comment. I just was trying to put it all together. It's going to different committees and hearing different aspects from each committee. It's starting to get where, how are we going to manage this whole process? This is what I was trying to say.
Well, I think the committees are still working through that, too. I think each committee is still trying to work through their component, but we're trying to update everybody at the same time. So, I don't think anything's really been implemented yet. We just are trying to keep everybody abreast of the information.
No, I appreciate that.
Hi there. I need to take away from the conversations that we're having because everything is very important. I do have to go back to kindergarten. For the last six days, I've been at the kindergarten administration, and I noticed that there was a volunteer who was copying things for the principals and for the nurses and for the guidance counselors. And I'm just asking you guys again to please help us to get the statistics before any major decisions are made. Maybe have the aide call these people. You're anticipating that there's at least 100 more children that are going to register? If you have, three of those aides that attended all of those registrations, that would be 30 calls for those people to make out to the children, the children's parents to see what they're going to do about registering their children, to see if they're going to be placing them in the Danaboo school district, or if they're going to be going to public school, if they're going to be homeschooling, or whatever. I just ask that you help us out, help your staff out, because they're the ones losing their jobs, and we're trying to help them, we're trying to help our children. We're just trying to do the right thing. And I ask that you do the right thing, too. So, all I ask of you.
Hey, thank you.
No comment?
I, I think we've, we've addressed this issue.
So, you're saying no, then?
I didn't say no on anything. I think you just heard us say yes to putting a, a link on our website.
You did, but what I'm asking is, can you have a volunteer and aide call these parents?
We're not going to use district staff to, to...
But why? Because these are the people, these people are going to be fired. They're going to be fired. Your, your staff is going to be fired if you don't do your statistics, if you don't find out the statistics. Why would you want to do that to your staff? I don't understand that. Why don't you do your due diligence?
I think we have done our due diligence. You've heard Amory Trainor tell you what the statistics are for enrollment. That's what the statistics are.
This year's a little different, though. It's a little different.
There's no way to know for certain.
Unless you call the parents.
And even then, we won't know for certain. And we're not going to use our district staff to, to, you know, work the campaign.
And just let it be known that you're not helping your staff out.
Okay. Thank you.
And this is what...
I'm, I'm sorry you're up again, but you're at your three minutes again.
I'm sorry that I take so much of your time. Really, no.
It's the policy.
I understand.
Thank you. A motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second. Okay?
Voting meeting?
We're going to move into a voting meeting? You want me to roll call?
No.
I already adjourned previous meeting.
Who's the question second?
It was wrong and...
And you want to, I'm sorry, the voting meeting, now he's closing with the letter. Do you have a donor to vote on that?
No, I voted on it.
He gave me approval. Sorry. I'd like to turn the vote for the board here for the high school.
Okay?
We can do that.
So, we're doing early retirement and early retirement.
Sorry. Do we need to do a vote on the copier thing?
No, we can wait until.
Voting room?
The council, we have the actual number of votes.
It was not to exceed 11.
I would vote, vote if I get started on it.
Let them get started?
Sure, let's vote. It's a shorter meeting in two weeks.
I asked Mr. Basil to just, yeah, I would say officially two days.
This meeting's ended. Voting meeting is now started. You want to take another vote? Okay, so, first item on the agenda is high school water heater. Cost is $6,800, so I have a motion.
So, vote.
Okay, hold on a second. Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Salmonaro?
Yes.
Mrs. Fasette, yes, Mr. Hartson?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Radowski?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay. Second item is to approve a turnstile and swipe card system for the stadium not to exceed $11,000.
Second. Do we want to say where the money's coming from?
Uh, might be coming from capital reserves.
Who is my second idea?
Who's over here?
Got it, Mrs. Hartzell.
Mrs. Hartzell. Okay, roll call vote.
Mrs. Fasette, yes, Mrs. Hartzell?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Radowski?
Yes.
Mr. Salmonaro?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, third item, Mr. Ross, would you like to read that?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that the school board offer an early retirement incentive, which would involve paying a $20,000 early incentive fee into the fourth year D plan teachers with 25 or more years of teacher service, who would announce their intention to the superintendent by considering this by March 28 with the final paperwork, a final decision made by April 4.
Mr. Reddick? Mr. Reddick?
And it will be irrevocable by April 4. Still so.
Second.
I have a question. I'm sorry. Rather than you want to just do the teachers, you want to do that it's the whole union of them, there might be some that are not teachers?
DDEA.
I'm just saying to you, Mr. Ross, all membership of that particular union, and